Mr. President, it's the Sanitary District Board of Directors to order. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Director Arlen Perry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Ewing.
Here.
Secretary Arlen Schaefer.
President.
Vice President James Farman.
President.
Vice President Michael Schaefer.
Here, thank you. Public comments, this is the time and place for persons in the audience to make comments on items within our subject matter that are not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak under public comments, seeing none? I have a question. Are we to do the closed session after the study session?
It's up to you. If you want to do it before or after, it's definitely put at 9:30, so it's really up to you.
Let's do it after, you know, give everybody a chance.
That's what I agree, Arlen. Okay, we do the closed session after then?
Yeah.
Okay, then we'll do the closed session immediately following the study session. Okay, great. Let's go to our items of study, then Scott, item number one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nabilah Guzman will be giving this report as well as introducing our guest speaker.
Great. Good morning, Nabilah.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. The sewer system management plan must be updated every two years. The last audit was in November 2015, and in November 2017, staff solicited proposals for conducting an internal audit. We received five proposals, but we decided to award it to EEC Environmental because they provided us with this timeline to conduct it. Would like to present Joe Jenkins from EEC, who will provide a presentation of the audit and his findings.
Thank you. Morning, Joe, welcome.
Joe Jenkins. That's the last presentation as well.
Four years, four years ago.
Oh, it was four years ago? Okay.
Time flies, doesn't it?
We took a year off.
Yeah.
It's okay if I control it, right?
I don't know if it can.
Oh.
Just, let's do it again, sorry. Yeah, it's me.
Oh. Okay, sure. Well, yeah, so this is a very good introduction, so we can just get right into it. So you can go back one slide, so I can brag about EEC Environmental a little bit. So again, my name is Joseph Jenkins, I was the lead auditor on this project, and then we had Jim Colk, who provided some additional technical support, and Keith Silva was our regulatory advisor. He spent previously 30 years with the EPA, so he's good to bounce questions off of. And then, as we mentioned, EEC has conducted previous audits for the district in 2011 and 2013, and then other cities in Orange County. So just a little bit of background of our audit history. So as Nabilah mentioned, the SSMP audit has to be conducted at least once every two years, with the previous audit for the district conducted in 2015. It includes a comprehensive review of the SSMP document, comparing the document to the requirements of the waste discharge requirements, but also to the general actual district practices and how they're being implemented. The SSMP should reflect what the day-to-day operations of the district actually are. But it's, oh, please go back, yeah, sorry. But it should be more than just a yes or no checklist, are you doing it, aren't you doing it? Should be a comprehensive review of the district practices, and really, it's an opportunity to improve programs and enhance programs. So we can go to the next one. So before we get into this year's audit, we just review the findings from the 2015 audit. There was a single non-conformance here. The district had not implemented, did not have CIP improvement projects passed the 2015 year, until that was addressed, and the CIPs have been implemented since then. So we can go to the next one. So this was the general audit process. We conducted an initial kickoff meeting with staff. We did a review of the SSMP document, reviewed documentation and available data. We conducted staff interviews, and then prepared the report. And within the much longer, bigger report, it identifies both major and minor nonconformances, provides some corrective actions to those nonconformances, and then provides additional recommended program enhancements. And on a positive note, there was no major nonconformances identified. We identified two minor nonconformances and 11 recommended program enhancements. And so the difference between major and minor, major nonconformance can, could result in a fine or additional enforcement actions by the state, and minor would just be them recommending corrective actions. Some of the documents and data we reviewed, the historic SSO data, sewer clean history, the current capital improvement plan, rehabilitation replacement projects, the current CCTV project that's being conducted with ProPipe, their fog control program, pump station management, and the training history, amongst other available documents. Here's the staff that were interviewed. They did single interviews with the general manager and district engineer, and then kind of a group interview session with the wastewater management staff and skated technician, each one lasting between an hour and a half to two hours or so. So we can get into the findings, and so the, you know, the best metric to determine whether or not SSMP is effective, or sewer system management program is, doing what's supposed to do is based on public SSOs. And so you can see by the graph and the downward trend, and then having zero public SSOs in 2017, the district is very effective at implementing the SSMP and the program. And so this graph here represents the recovery rate for SSOs that do occur. Since 2015, the district has not had an SSO where they did not recover 100% of the spill. And actually, the one spill that happened in 2015 just happened in an unfortunate location where volume was lost to the waters of the state. So doing a very good job at recovering SSO volume. And so the reasons behind the low SSO rate is certainly through a proactive preventative maintenance program. District currently cleans the entire sewer system once every 18 months, and they're meeting that cleaning frequency. They're doing this a lot through the established programs and established resources that were there, but also through recently added additional resources that has allowed them to keep a lot of the work that's being conducted in-house, to apply for faster response times and more effective work being completed. And one of the most recent additions was the CCTV trailer, so when crews are out there, they encounter a problem, they can identify the cause of the problem and remediate it So the district is also, has a proactive manhole rehabilitation program, and doing, planning more manhole rehabilitation this year, including the installation of composite manhole covers that prevent overflow and infiltration of rainwater into the sewer system, helping with capacity issues. Provide a lot of education and training, including the operators getting their CWEA certifications. The wastewater superintendent actually has his grade four certification, which is the highest level of certification you can have with CWEA. They attend regular conferences and attend the Orange County WDR general group that the district engineer actually helps run. And most importantly, the education that they're doing is well documented, which is something we generally find that agencies don't do such a good job of. And having the available resources and replacement parts inventory is also key. For SSO response, in terms of recovering the high percentage rate, the district has an emergency response plan in place. The staff is adequately trained in SSO response, and the necessary resources are available for that response, including backup pumps, generators, and sandbags to block storm drain Also to help with SSO response, the district has purchased the adjacent property to the yard, and are expanding the yard in that location to better centrally locate resources, and also, you know, better organize the yard to stay on top of inventory. The sewer master plan is nearly complete, should be completed by the end of 2018, but the district has already started addressing some of the structural grade five defects that have been identified that would be in the master plan, that's typically the focus of a master plan, and is using the GIS to conduct hydraulic modeling to identify any capacity issues within the sewer system. The district does have a CIP in the meantime, until the master plan is complete, to address, you know, ongoing sewer system management issues and needs, and according to district staff during interviews, the available funding for plant projects is available. As I mentioned, ProPipe has been conducting CCTV of the entire sewer system, and this started back in 2016, and as the most severe structural defects, the grade five structural defects are identified, they're being prioritized for repair. And so since 2016, 290 segments have been repaired, and 72 laterals have been trimmed that are protruding into the sewer system. District is also very proactive at reducing the hotspots or enhanced maintenance locations. These are the areas of the sewer system that are required to be cleaned more frequently than annually, and so there's a hot spot sewer subcommittee that meets quarterly to go over the hotspots and work towards mitigating those locations. And so in 2010, there were 95, and then by 2017, there's now only 21. So being very proactive with that. Okay, next slide. Here's a snapshot of the plan, 2017, 2018 capital improvement plan. So that, from the graph here, you see a lot of the budget is towards pump station rehabilitations and forced main rehabilitation, and a lot of this is because there were pump stations and forced mains that were previously scheduled for abandonment that the district has decided not to abandon, and so now they need to be rehabilitated and brought up to speed. So fog control program. Again, a good metric to determine the effectiveness of a fog control program is the number of fog-related public SSOs you're having. You know, being the district's fog program consultant, I would like to say you're welcome for this graph, but, you know, really, this graph is an indication of all of the programs, you know, the proactive sewer system clean, the rehabilitation and replacement program that's happening, along with the fog program, that, you know, you haven't had a fog-related public SSO since 2013, you know, which is good to see. And so on the next slide. More details of what the program includes. It's mainly about identifying and inspecting food service establishments. What the district does is concentrates resources on more of the high-risk facilities that could discharge a high quantity of fog to the sewer system by inspecting them more frequently, so quarterly, semi-annual, and then the lower-risk ones are inspected biannually. And then identifying new facilities as they open for business or change ownership, acquiring grease removal devices for those higher-risk facilities or facilities that could discharge fog, identifying any new potential fog-related hotspots. And the district also has a good fog disposal for the residential program. There's a recycling center at Orange Coast College where residences can take their fire grease and whatnot and dispose of it there, which is probably helping and very beneficial. So we can get into the two minor nonconformances that I mentioned at the beginning. So the first one is the current organizational chart does not accurately reflect district staffing. This is a very common nonconformance when you do an SSMP audit. There's typically a lot of change order, or changeover, and changing of positions and staffing within an organization, so just updating the org chart would easily take care of this one. And then the second one is that the district has not created overflow emergency response plans for four of the pump stations, and the reason for this, according to district staff, is these were the pump stations that were previously designated for abandonment, so emergency response plans weren't originally developed. Since now they've decided to keep them active, the plans will need to now be developed for them. So you'd want to have specific plans for each pump station that deals with the nuances of each station and how to respond if there's a spill there. So there's 11 recommended program enhancements that we identified. These aren't required to be implemented, but we recommend should be considered by the district. The first one is adding more measurable goals to quantify the effectiveness of the SSMP. In attachment to the SSMP, there are performance metrics in there, and so we recommend choosing some of those performance metrics and listing those upfront in the goal section of the SSMP, just to determine the effectiveness of the program. So typically, agencies use, obviously, SSOs that occur in an SSO response, but something that you can periodically review to see how effective the program is. On the next page, identify additional training opportunities for district staff, create and implement key standard operating procedures, and we in the report list out some examples of standard operating procedures that could be implemented. Update sewer standards to include new technologies, and conduct emergency bypass training for high-risk pump stations. And that's, that recommendation there is what a lot of agencies with pump stations are starting to do, practicing going out to ones that they, you know, you could potentially have a really high volumes spill at, and having the staff practice taking it offline, bypassing it if that's the procedure to bypass it, so that if something does happen there, they're familiar with what needs to be done. Conduct periodic SSO simulation training. Staff do attend simulation training, there's a good simulation training at OCSD. This recommendation is more on a smaller scale, possibly at the district yard, where they can practice filling out forms and blocking off storm drains and that sort of thing. Standardize the term for hotspots throughout the SSMP. Through, in the SSMP, you see it referred to as both enhanced maintenance location and hotspot. I assume enhanced maintenance location is the preferred term for it, so just using that standard term throughout. Develop written enforcement response plans for fog noncompliances. Develop a standing operating procedure for interactions with the city of Costa Mesa, and this is more particular to plan review and identification of new restaurants. And then just continue residential education, especially fog-related hotspots, so either handouts or flyers or door hangers, and using that approach. I know I went through things very quickly, but if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to field them at this time.
First of all, on the procedure here that you're recommending.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a timeline on this?
Yes, so within the report, we provided an Excel spreadsheet that has the timelines, but for the two minor nonconformances, we list in there July 2018, so.
I guess I missed that. And I just wanted to comment that I thought that the report was outstanding.
Great.
I feel like I graduated. Really learned a lot from it, it was very good.
Oh, very good, thank you.
Congratulations.
I have a question for Steve. How many bypass pumps do we have? Is that adequate for what we need?
Yes.
Okay.
Rob, please.
Thank you. A couple things. The interval within which we clean, once every 18 months, that stacks up very well in the industry, meaning most, for, most agencies take much longer than that, and I'm not sure of any that actually beat that and do their whole system once a year. So 18 months is really excellent for that interval. Getting, on the interactions with the city, we have myself and Bo or Steve attend development review committee meetings at the city. Or even if we don't attend a meeting, they send us a list of upcoming projects that includes all the restaurants. So when I see it in advance, I do send it to Joe, so they're still in developing plan stage by the time Joe gets it. And lastly, trying to update sewer standards to today's standards, horizontal directional drilling, go dig this, that kind of stuff. I tried that once already, and nobody has developed any standards, because there are so many different ones of types of drilling, types of, there are short liners, small sections of CIPP, there's other things. So we can look at it again and update something, but it's not so easy. It's not like everybody has them except for us. Nobody has them. So that's where we're standing on those items.
Joe, being a special district that handles just sewer.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously trash, but, I mean, we're dedicated to sewer. Have you done these audits for other organizations, for example, water districts that might have a sewer oper, a wastewater operation, or cities that have a wastewater operation?
Yes.
How do we compare with those people, or those entities?
Right, and, so very well, is in short, you know, the best city I can compare the district to in that sense is the city of Santa Ana. They're slightly larger as far as their system-wise, but they do both water and sewer. And so the key there is just keeping, they try to keep a very distinct separation between the water people and the sewer people. There's some cross-training in there. I think the only, only thing with that is they may have additional available resources to them, so additional trucks, additional staff if needed, and then they also, different funding opportunities where they can use, you know, water rates to help out with sewer projects and that sort of thing.
Compare us then, there was one chart that showed the SSOs, and it was a dramatic drop.
Right.
I think our staff has done an outstanding job of getting that almost to zero, and pretty close to zero.
Right.
How does that compare with Santa Ana?
Okay.
Walton and Gale Water District, which is both.
Right. So, yeah, in that table, you saw the little star that said the state average was 3.8 SSOs per 100 miles, and actually, that 3.8 is of similar size sewer systems, so it's sewer systems between 100 and 300 miles. And so you see that state average of 3.8, the district has always been usually below two SSOs per 100 miles, which is very good. The city of Santa Ana and other Orange County cities are very proactive in their, in their SSO prevention and the SSMP program, so they also stay around that, you know, one or zero spills per year kind of range. But, you know, typically, when you get much larger systems, say like Irvine Ranch Water District, or someone like that, they usually will be in that 3.8 to 4 range. You're going to have sewer spills in large systems, it's going to happen. The main goal should be preventing the category one spills, which is the spills that reach surface waters, and also having a high volume recovery rate, and also not having repeat SSOs at the same location, you know, over and over and over again.
Bob?
A minor change you might want to make on your slide. CWA operator grade four, the operator grades actually go to five. Steve, you probably have a collections.
Collections.
And is that limited to four?
Four.
Okay.
So, okay, I understand, yeah.
And in the agencies that you've reviewed that have both water and wastewater, do they mix the equipment? Do they use the sewer vector trucks for water emergencies?
Not typically, they won't typically use a lot of the sewer equipment for water work. What I've seen them do though is use, like, say they'll use like a bobtail dump truck for, that they would typically use for water construction and water projects, and then at the end of the day, they'll take it back to their yard and fill it up with sand in case they have an SSO for SSO response, you know, something like that. They typically don't like to use vac trucks and stuff for water, for certain.
Yeah.
I've seen cities do that in Midwest, but.
Okay.
The vac guys are also very protective of their trucks.
All right, we have a request for a public comment. Anything else for us, Joe?
I do not, no. Thank you again for the opportunity to conduct the SSMP audit for the district.
Appreciate the thoroughness and that. I like, I like the fact that you kept using the word, the term that our district is proactive.
Oh, yes. Sure. Thank you.
Thanks again, Joe. All right, Mr. Mosher, you wish to make a comment?
Thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board. My name is Jim Mosher. Although the district has had a very good record, recently, there was, of course, a large spill a few years ago on Anniversary Lane in the city of Newport Beach, and I understand and appreciate that a number of technical improvements have been made to the pump station there to improve the reliability of that area. However, my understanding is a major contributor to the size of that spill was a lack of coordination between this district and the city of Newport Beach, in the sense of people knowing who to report spills to and getting them handled by the proper agency. And speaking of proactive, I have very little sense that the city of Newport Beach would be proactive about correcting that situation, so I am hoping we might hear what steps have been taken by this district to improve the communication between Costa Mesa Sanitary District and city of Newport Beach, so that when citizens report spills in those border areas, which are considerable, not just Anniversary Lane, there's a large border area, that they are promptly handled by the correct, that the calls are promptly routed to the correct jurisdiction, and how those improvements have been working since then. Thank you.
Barbara?
Yes, thank you. We do have a very good relationship with the city of Newport Beach wastewater folks, their vectors and all. We had a spill, after the big spill, we had a spill on Indus that was smaller, happened on New Year's Day, but Newport Beach actually beat us out there, and then they stayed with us until everything was taken care of. So we have that set up, meaning one call does it all. We know who to call down there, they know who to call for us. But it obviously would always be a good idea to remind everybody and start passing out names and phone numbers.
Yeah.
But we do provide mutual aid to them and vice versa.
Yeah, I think what I got out of Mr. Mosher's comments, and correct if I'm wrong, is we need to make sure that the citizens in those areas know who to call. I assume they're going to call Newport Beach first, obviously, they live there. And I think you answered it for me, Rob. As soon as Newport Beach gets the call, they realize that it's us and they're right to us.
That's correct.
Okay, Jim?
You know, along the same lines, we had a, we had a problem with the county of Orange in that spill, as I recall, and, you know, they had locks on the gates and we couldn't get in, you know, where we needed to be. Did we get that handled or corrected, or? Rob?
Well, it came down to, to be able to grade or create an access road or something in the back bay is, that's a very hard thing to do, because it's under all the jurisdictions of, like, Corps of Engineers and everybody. So we don't really have the ability to do anything other than unlock a gate and drive over what's already there. So we have implemented changes at the pump station, and we've had staff training on what to do if we, if a likely scenario occurs again.
We have the keys to that lock?
No, we don't. I believe that we can get the, county inspectors are alive, meaning they're driving around Southern California at all times, and they'll respond very quickly to us, but we do not have keys.
We'll just cut the locks if we need to.
That's a good answer.
Yeah. I was going to ask the same question. That's, that's a very proactive approach, general manager. Thank you. So, all right, any questions? Nabilah, anything else to add to the report?
Uh, that was it.
Great, thank you all. Okay, we'll move then to item two, the code enforcement officer's report. Are you still awake?
I'm awake, sir. All right.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ed Roberts will be giving this report.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. Ed Roberts, I'll be doing the February 2018 code enforcement officer report. For the month, correction, for the month of February 2018, I had a series of nine scavenging investigations throughout the community. For the benefit of the board, there are maps and a brief narrative attached to the report detailing the circumstances of each of those nine investigations. If. detailing the circumstances of each of those nine investigations if any of the members of the board have a question regarding a specific one. Okay. Also, for the benefit of the board, to the rear of the report, you'll see an at-a-glance map of the community. You'll see that this month, there was a significant uptick. We've been averaging five, six, perhaps seven over the course of the year. This month, we had nine. Three of them were concentrated in the northwest portion of the community and with the bulk being in the west side and none on the east side this month. If you look at them, they're spread out pretty evenly throughout the area. There were no incidents of note whatsoever beyond just nine, which is a pretty heavy number for the community. On the direction of a couple of the members of the board for separate areas, I've been looking. They've made me aware of some concerns that have been brought to them by members of the community. So I've been concentrating patrol efforts in the College Park area and on the northwest portion of our community, above and beyond what I do in my typical patrol pattern. Like I said, nothing of note. Bear with me for a moment, please. And for February 2018, regarding trash container enforcement, we had 95 notices issued throughout the community. Again, nothing of any concern. Do I have any questions from any board members?
Most are, our guy on the alley behind the perpetuary that was active yesterday, he actually opens the gates, you know, the multifamily have enclosures. You know, that's city code now, have them closed. But he's now opening gates and looking in there. I hadn't noticed him for a couple of weeks. I think I'd mentioned to you last month. And I saw, just ironically saw him in there yesterday.
The person, the individual I think you're speaking about, President Schaefer, I believe resides to the rear of the Dodge dealership.
I think he does.
And I've had numerous contacts with the individual over the years now. It's just a matter of staying on top of the individual and catching him as he's doing it.
Yeah. Appreciate it.
I have a question regarding the alleys.
Yes, sir.
Remember a couple of months ago, I told you that the city's going to be reconstructing the alleys?
Mm.
Did you get a chance to check on that?
The alleys are probably for me, as far as code enforcement goes, the hotspot for me, that's where I spend the bulk of my time because the high number of high-density residential developments are out there. You can have a lot of cans out there. I've been in the Pepper Tree Alley, Royal Palm, east side, west side. I spend, I'd say a good 50, 60% of my time in the actual alleyways of the community. And I'm seeing what you reported. There's quite a, go through. I'm sorry, I thought you had a follow-up question?
Oh, no, no. I do, but remember the city, they're going to start working in the alleys.
Mm.
Did we get a chance to find out when they're going to start that?
I have no idea when the, I spoke to Larry Dryman from fourth floor. He's one of the city engineers. Apparently, the way I was led to understand, the city has a master plan of alley improvements and they're all scheduled based off of the condition of the alleyways and the way they appear, just like we do. They categorize each of their alleys in the condition they find it and they affix a designation as to where it is on their list of alley improvements.
Because I'm just thinking it could affect CRNR if they're going to be closing down the alleys and picking up the trash. That was my main concern.
Well, sir, if that's an option for you, we can certainly work ahead of them. You know, I would consider maybe doing a notification to the impacted residents in anticipation of, but I know Larry told me that the city does go through a notification process for the residents who are going to be impacted by these alley improvements. This was a while ago when we spoke. I don't know if anything's changed.
I just want to find out when we know so we can let CRNR know.
Well, I think, even when they do the reconstruction, the alleys are navigable. You know, they allow access, I believe.
That's what I'm just curious about.
Are they pulling out, I mean, are they demolishing and putting new concrete?
Well, I'm not sure because at the liaison meeting, they said they're going to be reconstructing some of the alleys. And so I don't, that's as much as I know.
Number of months.
Sir, most, what I've observed is they've gotten rid of the AC. The asphalt alley is in favor of re, you know, they'll put a swale and an actual concrete roadway in, on most of these alleys for permanence, so.
Should we do that on Royal Palm? Any other questions for Ed? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I have a comment. On your car, you have this insignia of Costa Mesa Sanitary District?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and I want to tell you, people are starting to notice it. I've had calls on it saying, you know, the city has this enforcement. No, 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 no. And I was curious, Gina, on the newsletter, do we have anything in there that says that we, Sanitary District, has a code enforcement going around checking? If we could do some kind of article on that, because people think it's the city and it's us, you know? And I was surprised how they're starting to notice it, you know? But I think we should get the credit.
You could need a big banner to hang from the back of the car.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anything else for Ed? Always, thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Thank you very much.
Item three, Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, item number three and four are just receiving file reports and happy to answer any questions if you have.
Questions on the tonne, organics or solid waste diversion? Okay, let's go to item five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Nebila Guzman will be giving this report.
Good luck.
Good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. Over the last 10 months, staff and CRNR have been negotiating for a new contract to continue to provide solid waste and recycling collection services. The following deal points have been agreed upon by staff and CRNR. A fixed term limit of 10 years with the two, five-year extension options. So we've gotten rid of the evergreen clause and the board of directors will have the option to solicit bids towards the end of the 10-year term, or the board can extend the agreement for another five years. There will be a district-wide door-to-door household hazardous waste collection program. Each household would be allowed three pickups per year with a maximum of 15 gallons or 125 pounds per pickup, and that can change depending on the permit that the county gives us. So those are the amounts right now, but it could change in the future and we will notify the board and residents as well. We will be having a free mulch event. Once a year, CRNR will provide free mulch to residents in the springtime. CRNR will reimburse CMSD with $30,000 the first year and $35,000 every year after, along with annual CPI increases for various programs, including public education, anti-s scavenging, hiring a consultant to evaluate CRNR's performance, and a donation for our battery recycling The new contract will also include a comprehensive outreach program that will help CMSD achieve 75% diversion. A CRNR sustainability coordinator will dedicate approximately 20 hours a week promoting solid waste diversion programs in the district. Attached is a description of the plan, and one idea is to recognize residents for doing a good job with their recycling efforts by having a photo of them in the newsletter and awarding them a gift card. We will continue to have a free rollout service for seniors and ADA residents. A physician's notes will be needed to set up the service, but they can contact the district and then we will notify CRNR. For those residents that want their carts pulled out but can't provide a doctor's note, there will be a valet service. It'll be $35 a month and CRNR will roll out and service up to three carts on their trash days. The fee of $35 will go directly to CRNR. And lastly, a CPI increase. CRNR can request a two-year CPI rate increase, but their request will have to go to the board for approval. Some cities have automatic CPI rate increases. The staff believes that the district will lose control setting the rates if an automatic adjustment is implemented. CRNR agreed to allow CMSD to review their financial books to determine whether their profit margin, what their profit margin is with CMSD before a rate increase is presented to the board. There is one point that was not agreed upon between staff and CRNR, and that is the GPS system on CMSD computers. Staff requested access to the GPS system to improve our customer service. For instance, when residents want to learn when their carts are emptied, staff can give residents the location of the nearest truck and approximate time of arrival. CRNR has not agreed to, please, give us access to their GPS system, but they did allow us video, uh, they did allow us, they did offer to let us see their video recording of the trash route so we could see if a cart is emptied or not. But just two weeks ago, I requested a video and their operations team denied it. They said that it took too long to extract the video and it would take even longer to find the point, the location I was looking for, so they said no. CRNR also offered to designate a CRNR employee to the district to answer requests for missed pickups immediately and get in touch with affected residents in hopes of alleviating the number of calls the district receives. CMSD has offered to pay for all costs associated with the GPS system, including licenses, installation and maintenance fees, but CRNR is still unwilling to accept citing concerns about GPS data becoming public record. Staff has consulted the district council whether GPS tracking data constitutes a public record and if so, how long the record must be kept. It was advised that there is no, there's no retention requirement for GPS records and staff would be able to delete GPS data every few days without violating the Public Records Act or any privacy of the resident. This concludes my report. If the board has any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Dean, does the board have any questions?
My main concern is getting this contract signed. It's been, what, 10 months or a year? And the GPS could be an addenda item that we could do later, but let's get the contract signed. That's where I'm coming from.
We've had discussion on both sides. I mean, we've received letters from CRNR, we've gotten opinions from Allen. And we seem to have, you know, diametrically opposed opinions. Eric, can, Allen, do you want to take this? Scott, where are we? What's the, what's the decision-making process? And why are we hung up on this, I guess is where I'm at?
I'll take a stab at it and I think, and CRNR can offer some points, but I think their concern is property information that might be released and with their own GPS system. And that's why it was suggested that if we can pay our own GPS system on the trucks and we went back, yeah, we can do that. We found the cost, so if we put our own system on there, we're not sure why that would be an issue, then their attorney is saying that there's liability issues. Again, I think we have some questions into that because I've talked to other general managers that have GPS in their trucks and they concur with Allen about regarding the vague, vagueness of the Public Records Act. They delete the information when they want to. They find it to be very helpful information. We also know that, you know, my, I believe that having a system on our website where residents can find out where the trucks are located, when they're going to be, when they're going to be in their neighborhood to pick up the trucks, waste management does that for their system. So if waste management can do that, I don't know why we can't do it. So I think there's just some different philosophies and my belief is just a better way of, more efficiently and enhances customer service.
Maybe a more direct question to Allen. I know we have, in Nebila's report, it says that the GP, the records can be deleted every few days. CRNR's council is saying that that's not necessarily the case, that we have to keep the GPS records based on our records retention schedule. Where are we on that? Or what's your opinion on that?
Let me just say that this issue's only arisen, at least I'm only aware of it, for the last two weeks, so it's not like this has been lingering forever. But they have a GPS system on their truck already that we could get access to. I think there is a disagreement about, and a vagueness in the law about keeping records. The, a city has to keep records a certain amount of time. A district doesn't have the same two-year requirement because we have a different statute. But certainly, if it becomes a public record, then you have to treat it differently. But if you just have access to a record, then it doesn't become a public record until you download it. So it just seems like there's a solution here and I'm not sure why there's resistance and whether it's been fully explored yet, but I guess we do have a disagreement about keeping public records and whether it's required or not.
The other issue that CRNR has been pretty open about telling us about is a liability issue. And, you know, what if that record is used for a burglary or someone is hurt, you know? Can you address that? Can you?
I don't, I mean, I was trying to think of this, the theory, in that somebody would go on there to see who's not home. I mean, the, it's a, you can drive by a house and you can look at a house. It's, that's open. There's not a privacy harness there. You can drive down the street and look at a house. So if it just makes it convenient for an organized burglar who had a methodology to review these tapes every few days to go burglarize something, I don't quite get that. If it's the fact that they, this could be used in accident, you know, if somebody had an accident and they wanted to use the tape to prove something happened, that would always be the case. If you sent a litigation hold to CRNR, you say, don't destroy that tape. There was an accident here and that could be useful. And then they would have an obligation to not destroy that tape until you subpoena it. So, you know, I mean, I know there's some things thrown out in that letter that like raise issues, but I don't really see it and it's not legally disallowed or prohibited. It's just an argument being raised. And, I mean, I guess they deny in their letter that it's about giving up control, but it just seems like that's, that's what it's about. But I'm not sure, I, in their letter, they say, I'm speculating about that. You're right, I'm speculating. I don't know why they don't want to share more of the information. And then I was talking to Scott just this morning about if they have the GPS already on their system and they would give it to us immediately, then that seems like the perfect solution. But then Nebila told us and Scott confirmed it, that they're not so forthcoming when we ask them for things. So if we couldn't get it very quickly, then that eliminates any benefit we have from it because we're looking for quick information. The truck is on this street or something like that. And if they say, yeah, we'll get back in a week, that's like, okay, well, thanks, but, you know, that wasn't helpful. I know that was a rambling answer, but it's, believe me, the law on the Public Records Act doesn't, that's not the deciding factor in this matter. There's a solution here.
If you, if you believe this is going to be a guide to source, you know, let us know and we'll still try to work out something with CRNR. If you fit in, if you think we can just go with it, with, without it, we'll do that. But we need some direction from the board.
Art's comment, and I take this under consideration also, is can we move forward with the contract? Is it possible to leave this as an open end or something that we can talk about at a future date? Does, I mean, do we have to stipulate in the contract yes or no with the GPS or can it be in something out there we can consider? I mean, a lot of the programs that they're offering, the mulch event, it's spring now. I mean, we need to move forward with the contract, whether we do it with GPS or not. Is that something we can?
I think if you implement the contract without, you know.
I appreciate you, Ken.
That's my, please.
Dean, did you want to address anything or you? We just?
I have any questions you may have. I think our, I.
We were, we were forced to hire a municipal attorney on this because of our insurance carrier's concerns and our insurance carrier's concern about defense of the district. So I'd rather not comment on her letter. I think it's between our counsel and your counsel to resolve that, but I will say that we're committed, in our letter, we're committed to be more responsive to Nebila and the staff to the point that we can respond to a customer's question within two hours. And we've committed to that and we believe that's sufficient, probably more than sufficient with most of our contracts. So be happy to put that in the contract if you'd like.
Any questions?
I'm just ready to make a motion to accept the contract as presented and try to work on the GPS.
We can't do that this morning. We'd have to do it with the board.
Okay. It's not on, oh, that's not on our agenda, is it?
You can advise us that those are the terms you
You can, you can advise us that those are the terms you'd like to see in a contract that would be placed on a public agenda for formal approval or whatever.
That would be my recommendation.
I second that recommendation.
I don't think we need to second, but we'll, we can, go ahead. One of the things that was proposed or was, was put out there was, right now, if a customer misses trash, they call here and then we call CRNR. There was some discussion about that customer calling directly to CRNR and bypassing us. Is that something we... What's your opinion on that?
I mean, yeah, if they, if they know CRNR's phone number, they can call them directly, but, uh, and some probably do, but also some know, they just call us directly. It just happens, you know, it is just...
I think, I think we need to, yeah, we still need to know the, the number of those kinds of calls. And we get that by them calling us and, and our number's more readily available. It's on the trash cans, it's in our newsletters.
CRNR numbers are the trash can, isn't it? It was Mesa. It's CRNR's number's not a trash can, isn't it?
Well, the old ones still, and many of them are old, they still, I think, still have the sanitary district number on it.
Yeah, I was thinking it's still the same.
I think they had Costa Mesa disposal on it, didn't they? The original cans.
Let the look.
I know it's eight, four, four, oh. That is?
It, it's the same phone number, but they don't say Costa Mesa disposal.
I know, but it's, it's, it goes to CRNR.
Yes.
It goes to CRNR, that's...
So let's take that recommend, you have our, the recommendation. Um, can we include?
Well, I got the second. I don't think you're taking, you don't think you took an action on it yet.
Do we need to take action on our recommendation now? We can just...
You're struggling? Okay.
It's a receiving file item with, uh, your, 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 your records ready back.
Okay, so Arlene seconded it, um, and Art made the, made the recommendation. Are you guys willing to put in there, Dean made the, the offer that, that customers are contacted within a two-hour timeframe?
For the data's available within a two-hour timeframe?
Yes.
Can, can that be part of your motion?
Yes.
Because I, I think that's important that we get back to them. Okay. Is there any disagreement from anybody on the recommendation? Any other discussion? Oh, um, I had one, something related, but kind of on a different vein. I attended the Southern California Waste Something Forum last Wednesday. It wasn't SWA, I don't... S C W M F or something, and it was really an interesting meeting. And there were a couple of things that they brought up regarding trash and, and haulers and stuff. Uh, but one of the things that, one of the people talked about was, one of the most aggravating things for me on my organics cart is how dirty it gets. And I'm, I know you guys realize this, all of you. Someone, they had a picture of a cart that had little, like a, you know, on your ice chest, the little empty valve about the bottom? Where the, you can drain the water out? These carts have a little drain plug down there. Did you guys, you're shaking your head, Dean. It just seemed like that would have been a great idea. No?
It would drain it on the blacktop.
I'm sure it would drain, I'm gonna drain it on my grass to get the, you know... Anyway, it's just so hard to wash that thing out and then turn it over. My wife has been complaining about washing it out and having to turn it over, so...
I think, I think CRNR has a program where they come out and do that, don't they?
Yeah, I remember us talking about that. I'm big facetious, obviously.
We recently purchased those trucks and, uh, for a fee, we will come out and wash, steam clean, wash and sterilize. Cars are out, right after, but there are other companies that are trying to do that.
Could you get that number for my wife?
What is the fee based on? Does the fee mean all three cans or one can?
Whatever you ask for.
Yeah, whatever you ask for.
Maybe that's something we could get in the newsletter just to note about.
Yeah, that's interesting.
We're, we're not ready to provide any. We've got the trucks. You need to give us a couple months.
No, no, I'm not, I don't think we should have the next newsletter, but eventually, once we have it.
That'd be real good, isn't it? What would be the cost roughly?
Roughly, uh, roughly fifteen to twenty dollars for one cart, sure.
Because we can... Because we could use some of that money that we're gonna get from CRNR every year to probably offset that for citizens.
Yeah.
You know, just a five, I mean.
Fifteen, twenty a cart?
For a trip.
Actually, we have, we have one city that actually wants to do it, um, on a semi-annual basis for the residents and it'll be a no charge. The city of Dana Point, um, of course, they've got a lot of money in the bank, but, uh, they, they've had some concerns about smelly carts in the, uh, high-density areas in downtown.
Now, let us know when you get that ready.
Yeah, let us know. That's interesting.
The main focus of this conference last week, uh, Scott, if it's okay, I'll address this to Gina, had to do with legislative updates. And there's a couple of things I'd like some more information on, if you can. Interesting, AB 2779, they're gonna start requiring that single-use beverage containers have a strap on the cap. Okay, that, that one, that was self-interest. The one that was interesting was AB 2115, where they're trying to get a speed limit bill for vehicles passing or overtaking waste service vehicles while they are collecting. I didn't heard that one, but that's, that would be an interesting one to look at. Um, the other one was AB 901 where the recycling reports, I think I got this right. Recycling reports are no longer gonna go to the counties. They're gonna go directly to CalRecycle.
Say that again.
The recycling report diversion rates and reports are all gonna now go directly, or they're trying to get it to go directly to CalRecycle rather than through the counties.
Is that the one the city puts out each year?
I assume that is. So the city will have to now go directly to CalRecycle.
But now are these, uh, that you're reading, are they?
They're up for consideration now. Yeah, yeah. And, you know, because CSDA doesn't, I, I don't remember seeing any of these with CSDA, but these are, these are really solid waste bills. Well, I was gonna see what Gina can find out and then maybe for that to use. Okay, but the speed limit one kinda blew me away. I thought...
Gina, you can let me know, because I go up there again pretty soon.
Okay. Thanks for your indulgence, all of you. Let's go to item number six, Scott.
Given this report.
All right. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, item six is the consideration of applicants for the Citizens Advisory Committee. The district has received four applications for the committee and these applications are attached to the staff report for your review. The committee was proposed and approved by the board last October and it intends to provide an opportunity for district residents to learn about the district, to meet and discuss district matters and to then provide recommendations to the Board of Directors on key issues. The committee can have up to eleven members and six members will constitute a quorum. The, um, and as stated in the attached administrative policy, which was adopted on October 26th of last year. So at this point, the district has only received four applications at this time and we are still in the process of seeking applicants. The four applications will be brought to the March 22nd Board of Directors meeting for, um, your approval, along with any additional applications that we receive in between now and the board meeting. Um, I wanted to let you know that we did advertise for the committee in the daily pilot, OC Register, um, all of our social media platforms, the district website, and we also did some email blast through Gov Outreach. Um, I plan on putting an article in the spring newsletter, which is gonna come out in about mid-April, so we're hoping to get some feedback through that. And we're also gonna reach out, um, again, to the city of Costa Mesa and to Peachjar, which distributes flyers to the schools.
Question. Um, have we thought about advertising off the city's cable TV?
Yes, I did reach out to the city when we first started the program. They didn't respond, so I'm gonna try reaching out to them again and hopefully get it on there.
I, I guess one of the comments I'd make is if we got three or four more people that had the same credentials as these four people, we'd be in really good shape with this thing. There's some pretty qualified, I mean, I wish I had the time to get all these degrees. The one person I do have a problem with is Mahdi Fields. He worked for AAA, so I'm not sure I could really go far. Obviously, uh, very qualified and, yeah, I mean, he, he was very impressive, so... So the direction at this point is we're, we're at the deadline, coming to the deadline, aren't we?
Um, we're actually past the deadline. The deadline was, um, March 1st. So we've just opened it continuously until we get the amount we need.
Do we want to reach out, Scott, maybe, to these four people and invite them to a meeting?
I would like to try to at least get two more people in the committee.
Is that okay?
I'd say wait till we get at least six.
Okay.
And then reach out.
Have we notified these people that they've been received and you might want to, if we're gonna extend it, let them know at least that we're gonna extend it, that we're looking for a couple more and that we're extending the deadline? Couple of people that I had talked to that I thought were gonna apply didn't. That's okay.
You still had the chance to, though.
Yeah, they could. Okay. Any other questions for Gina on this? And, uh, go forward. Thank you for what you've done so far.
Just a question. Do you have an, an application that I could take to someone?
It's on our website, but we can print it out for you if you'd like to.
Maybe before I go today.
Sure.
Maybe a couple of, because I have a couple of people in mind that would be good members.
Okay, item seven.
All right, thank you. Um, for item seven, I'm happy to share that the district has officially been awarded the Orange County Regional Recycling and Waste Reduction Grant in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. Um, over the course of five years, this grant is going to assist with funding, um, the District Citizens Environmental Protection Academy as well as enhancing our bilingual public outreach efforts. Particularly for the organics recycling program. So during year one, they're going to fund a hundred percent of those programs. Year two, they'll fund eighty percent. Year three, they'll fu, fund fifty percent. And then years four and five, we're responsible for a hundred percent, um, to make sure that the programs are sustainable. The Citizens Environmental Protection Academy is going to include an educational workshop that we're gonna hold here at the district. Um, it's going to feature speakers like Mike Carey from OCC Recycling Center, Joe Jenkins from EEC, um, as well as district staff. And then the academy is also going to include free tours of local wastewater and recycling facilities, including OCC Recycling Center, CRNR's Materials Recovery Facility, O C S D, O C W D, and also our district yard. And the tentative schedule for the academy is included in the, in the staff report. The workshop is going to be held on Saturday, April 28th from nine to eleven AM. And then the tours are going to take place, um, during the following, following week on March 3rd and 4th. We've done some advertisements for the academy. Um, they're going to be in the district newsletter, daily pilot, OC Register, social media, Peachjar. Um, we're utilizing the Chamber of Commerce app. That's fairly new. And we're also gonna reach out to some local environmentally conscious community groups to help us spread the word. Um, and then in terms of the bilingual public outreach portion of the grant funding, we're going to design and purchase some trash cart hangars that will have English and Spanish messaging um, to let people know that they can utilize their organics recycling carts and what, what to put, put in them, what not to put in them. Um, we're also gonna do a social media campaign. That will include some Spanish messaging as well.
Excuse me, can you go over those dates again that you're gonna have the meeting, you know, the, can you go over those dates real quick?
Yes, so, um, Saturday, April 28th is going to be, um, what we're calling the workshop, where we'll have some speakers here at the district. Um, that day will also include a brief tour of the OCC Recycling Center from nine to eleven in the morning. And then the, um, the rest of the tours will take place the next week on May 3rd.
Okay, because you said March, so it's May.
Oh, I'm sorry. May. May 3rd and May 4th. Um, we have a webpage as well that has that information. We're still waiting on it.
What happens if we don't get the six people to, for the academy? Is this for the academy, right?
Um, the six people...
This is different than the advisor.
Oh, that's different, okay, okay.
For this event, we're looking to serve about twenty people, um, because we're providing transportation, so we have limited seating. So twenty, and then we'll take a waitlist if there's over twenty.
Would we get a van or a couple vans to do it or?
A shuttle, a shuttle bus.
Do you think it'd be helpful to have Barry videotape?
Yeah, that's, that's the intention, yes.
Oh, so you've already contacted, okay, good. Uh, that'd, this would be a really neat thing to put on the website, I think. Some people could take a look at. And when they do the groundwater replenishment system, we'll direct their firm and be there to, to lead the tour, I hope.
He could.
He could do it for sure.
Him and Bob.
No, don't send Bob. Okay, any questions for Gina on that? Good job. Thank you so much. All right, let's go to a fun one. Item eight.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. So this item is, we are seeking directions from, from the board and it, it's regard to an incident that occurred on February 27th, 2018, when a couple of residents on Sandalwood Street noticed a contractor, um, by the name of Luna's Sons Concrete, uh, popped open one of our manholes and, uh, used a wheelbarrow to empty, uh, concrete in, into the sewer system. They notified the police. The police notified us. We went out there, um, and confirmed that, yes, it is, um, concrete. Uh, you can see in the pictures, attached pictures. Um, when we interviewed, um, the person who did it, he, he said it was just gray water, but as you, again, you can see, it's, it's more than just gray water. We have, uh, obviously, um, witnesses that, that have seen him, took pictures, uh, even a videotape of the discussion. Um, so I think the, the, the report, along with all the evidence, is, is compelling. And so staff, today, today's staff is, is recommending Board of Directors to request the Orange County District Attorney, Tony Ruckus?
Ruckus.
Ruckus, thank you, Ruckus, to commence and prosecute an appropriate action against Luna's Sons Concrete providing District Operations Code, Section 609 dash 040, unlawful to dump unauthorized materials into the district sewer system and direct District Council to submit the district's investigative report to the district attorney.
So we just do a recommendation?
This is an action.
This is action. I believe that we do this.
Second.
I have a question. Does, uh, have you tried to negotiate with this guy at all? Or, uh, you think this is so onerous that, uh, we need to take this action?
Pretty onerous, yeah. I, I think, I think this action's appropriate. We've also submitted, we've also incurred about eighteen hundred dollars, uh, costs and, and we submitted that bill to them. I don't, Steve, have you received any? No, we still have not received any money, so, so not only will we go after criminally, but if we don't receive, um, the money, we can go after small claims as well.
The, uh, obviously, he's doing some work for a resident.
Yes.
What's the story from the resident?
I don't know. We didn't, we didn't interview the resident where he was doing the work on.
Wouldn't we, shouldn't we contact the resident?
We could if we want to, sure.
Do we know who the resident is?
I don't think so, no.
He did come out, um, on the day we were cleaning the line and he wanted to know what was going on, so he explained what happened. And he ran away. He was going down the street. The day was kind of work and then he went back in his house, so, oh, yeah.
We're not sure of that, huh?
But, um, while we were out there, the city also came by and inspected. And, because they got a call, they came to report. They were, of course, they came out also. But I was talking to the inspector from the city. They also had a call with this company of, you know, and stuff, and this whole thing.
The pictures that you guys did down in the line are one thing. The pictures that were taken by a sum of a resident, a neighbor, is that a particular?
So, some pictures are from, um, from us, some are from the residents.
So the pictures are like the truck and there's a picture of a kid working in a driveway or something? Who, who took those?
I took those. I went the next morning to see what the damage was, so I pulled up and the truck was here again.
Did they pour liquid co, I, I?
It's like, um, kind of like slurry.
Okay. You were able to clean it out quick enough to?
Yeah. Luckily, it was the end of the manhole, the end of the mine, so the top of the mine. So you had no flow coming in that direction that could be distracted, but still, you know, it's a problem.
Yeah, then we have a motion to second. I don't mind, I'll support it, but I think the resident needs to know that the contractor he hired did this work. Whether he denies it or not, it's pretty obvious. You can see him working in the driveway. So I think as part of it, we need to let, make, make sure that the... So I think as part of it, we need to make sure that the resident knows.
Plus, the contractor needs to know he can't do that.
Where's the contractor located?
Just go to San Ana.
Yes, San Ana.
I didn't even look. Yes, sir.
Thank you again, President Schaefer. My name is Jim Oser. If I can make a public comment. In addition to violating the operations code, looking at the staff report here, this is part of it, at the end of the redacted pages here, it says that the Costa Mesa Police Officer also cited Penal Code, Section 374.2, which he asserts prohibits dumping material into a sewer system. So I would think that would be part of your advice to the district attorney, that there are multiple violations, not just of the operations code.
It's good. Thank you.
President Schaefer, if I may, yeah. It's our duty to report and direct the district attorney to file on our ordinance violations. He will on his own make a determination and that will be part of the mix, is that there's a penal code violation too. And it's a little more complicated of a statute. He may charge both and then, you know, how these things work. There's a plea to one and a fine or something and probation or whatever happens out of this matter, but it'll all be part of the mix. But all those facts will be before District Attorney Ruckus. We've talked to the investigator over there who specializes in this and he was very interested in this matter and certainly had the time to devote to this. So there should be a good workup. But our citizens were incredible that brought this to our attention, that got involved in. As you may have seen from the video, they, he actually confronted the contractor, saying, "You can't do that," and took a video. And it was really an amazing act of citizens, you know, stepping up and doing the right thing.
So, okay, then we have a motion in a second. I'll call for a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries five to zero. Okay. Thanks, Steve. Thanks for your input, your work on it. Any comments or communications from the directors? Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn my phone off.
That was good timing.
Angel tickets?
We need to go into a closed session. We don't need to do roll call because that's already been established and the order, we're already in order. This has been set aside for conference with legal counsel on existing litigation, Government Code 54956.9B1, Costa Mesa Sanitary District versus Mesa Water District. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Okay. I'm going to reconvene from open, excuse me, from closed session to open session regarding existing litigation, Government Code 54956.9B1, Costa Mesa Sand District versus Mesa Water. The board has given direction to our council regarding a settlement conference in this matter before a judge. So council has our direction. And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting.
I'll just add that $20,000.
For litigation? Okay. Thank you. Then we are adjourned.